Going to move it down so you can all hear me a little better. We don't yet have our good audio speaker system.
Welcome everyone to the Diamond Safety Improvements Public Comment and Input Meeting. We're going to start off with a brief overview and presentation from the Pinoni Engineers, Jason Stimmel and Alan Leonori. Pinoni Engineering was contracted by the Borough to assist with looking at safety improvements following a fatal accident in the Diamond area. On behalf of the Borough Council, I want to state that no option at all has yet been selected. We are open to all ideas and concepts. We have the three in the back of the room. Other ideas that you may come up with, we will also look at those as well. If any changes do rise to the top, those ideas must be approved by PennDOT as well. For your information, the white plastic curbing and delineator posts at the Diamond are meant to be temporary only and are meant to show you, the public, what could change in the area. Many ideas have been discussed and received from the public so far. What you see tonight in the back of the room on the phone bars are just three options. We are here to listen to you. This will not be a question and answer period. It will be totally a listening period. So none of us up front will be speaking. You all will be coming up after the presentation, giving your comments and thoughts. We will be listening. After the engineers have finished, citizens are welcome to come to the podium. You need to state your name and address along with your comments. In order to help make sure everyone has a chance to comment, your comments will be limited to three minutes maximum. Don Holderman will be the timekeeper and he will let you know when your time is up. You may finish your sentence. If you don't see Don's sign that your three minutes have reached, he will then hit the gavel that I just hit when I called this public hearing to order. We would encourage you to complete a comment form as well. They're on the table. Comments will be received through the month of November. A recording of tonight's meeting will be available on CNET's website and the Borough's webpage. That's belfont.net. Citizens can also complete a survey, complete a comment form, or send a letter or email to the Borough. The email address is borough, B-O-R-O, at belfontpa.gov. The address is 236 West Lamb Street, Belfont, 16823. And the survey that's here is also on the website at belfont.net. Jason, Alan, take it away.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. See if I can get my mask off without hooking up my glasses. All right. Well, thank you for the introduction. Again, my name is Jason Stimmel with Pinoni. I've been a traffic and transportation engineer for over 20 years. And as stated, you know, we were brought on to facilitate taking ideas and putting them basically to paper, to get them to the concept level, to address the issues. So we have essentially two concepts that have been floated around. I know it's been on the media and the news, but do take note of the ones in the back of the board are the current versions, not some of the dated ones being circulated. So please pay attention to that. The third one is essentially a no build. So that's out there. I think that's useful for everybody to be able to see and contrast and compare. Okay, here's where we're at today. Okay, here's some of these changes coming and potentially could happen with those concepts. As mentioned, nothing is decided. We're not in preliminary engineering phases. We're certainly not in final engineering design phase here. We're in a conceptual, let's start to look at this issue. We know it's about pedestrian safety. You know, there's some concerns about how vehicles navigate through this intersection and some speed concerns. What we're asking for is your constructive input, right? We would like to know what your preference is. If you don't like any of them, that's okay. We're not here to push anything. We have no agenda. We would like to know what you do like and dislike. And if you have any other ideas, something that you don't see and you'd like to present that, that's another key importance for having this questionnaire for you guys to fill out and for what you speak to Don about if you come to the podium. Most importantly, I want to make sure you understand that myself and Al, we're here to listen. We're here to learn from you all. This is your community. You understand that. Al even lives around here, so it's also his community. We're here to educate if you have those types of questions. And we're here ultimately to find the best solution, right? We have a problem and we're trying to just help find that solution. So let's do a little bit of a history here. As you know, there was a pedestrian fatality, right? In the past five years, there were four significant pedestrian crashes, one of them being that fatality. And as engineers, we can look at that crash data. We can look at it in terms of that five-year period. We can relate it to the intersection volumes. And there is actually an equation that gets you basically a crash rate. And then PennDOT publishes a homogeneous report statewide. You can then say, okay, here's my intersection in terms of some of the generals, in terms of the overall width, lanes, volume, and they will distill that down and say statewide intersections of this type have this type of crash rate. And in this instance, for pedestrian crashes, you are above what would PennDOT would accept as the statewide. It's above the average. So that's a red flag that you have an issue to potentially address. Again, that's based off of five years of crash data. And mine, you know, you have to understand that it can be cyclical. You go five years and you have nothing. But as it stands right now, in the last five years, it gives a red flag. So why, you know, you look at pedestrian safety, we know that it can be related. There's an analog. So volume, traffic speed, volume going through the intersection is a direct correlation to the overall pedestrian safety. It's how many conflicts are occurring. You have a certain number of crosswalks, you have a certain number of pedestrian activity. I'd say it's a pretty heavily pedestrian downtown that's your core. So you're creating that mix and you can't separate the two. So when we look at this, it's what as engineers we call, we look at our toolbox of traffic calming measures. It's measures that address two things. It's taking care of vehicles, helping slow them down, especially through an urban core, and what can you do to also increase pedestrian visibility? So when we got into this, we worked with the Streets Committee, we worked with council, and we were given some certain things that we were trying to accomplish, right? We had this kind of this blank slate. You know, we were told that, okay, well, yes, we have this pedestrian. We're trying to make it better for pedestrians to navigate through the intersection. We also were told about specific vehicle speed concerns. One of the ones that was called out to attention was Allegheny Street, turning right to head down High Street there. So that right turn movement, pretty high speed. And it's been called out as that was something for us to take a look at and think about and consider. We also have the issue with where the mid-block crossing was, right up very close to the intersection, very little separation between the actual crosswalk at the intersection that goes towards to the monument, right? So you have very little separation. That mid-block location would never get approved today by PennDOT. It's basically a grandfathered one. It's not, they have some certain set criteria that they like to see separation for how soon can you have a mid-block crossing in terms of its relationship to a nearby intersection.
Can I ask which crosswalk you're talking about? Are you talking about the line from Face Center to the Y?
It's already been relocated, yes. I'll clarify that, so thank you. And another thing, so you know, we're dealing with, that mid-block crosswalk was not standard, not an ideal location. We recall it to the attention that we have what I'm calling perpendicular parking, which currently is what was substantially already closed off, right? So perpendicular parking that close to the intersection proper has its own, causes its own conflicts. So something else for us to consider. And we had concern about, just in general, this is the number of crosswalks, right? You have with this intersection being spaced out as it is, you know, somebody that's turning, say, from Allegheny Street and making a left turn movement, think about how many crosswalks you as a motorist need to be aware of while also watching for all the vehicle conflicts. So you're making a left turn, you have to go through because you don't have the stop, there's no stop, right? Allegheny Street, this is basically a stretched out two-way stop control intersection as it stands today. So you have to watch, yeah, first crosswalk on Allegheny, then you're in the middle, kind of the middle intersection, you're watching all the other movements, you're trying to make that left turn, and then you have two crosswalks back to back that you're crossing over, and you're trying to make sure that there's nobody backing out or all the other conflict, right? So it's just a lot going on within this intersection. So again, some of these concepts, what we're trying to do is to simplify, make it more pedestrian friendly and less conflict, especially for motorists to generate, but as a pedestrian, it also works to help you as you're walking to have less conflicts that you're trying to watch for, right? Narrowes down how much you need to be aware of. In terms of the project history, it didn't just start with Pinoni. Prior to us getting onboard, Belfont and the council did seek essentially PennDOT input through the local technical assist program, LTAP. So they actually had, how many times was LTAP in? Three times that you? So they solicited input, right? So LTAP provides guidance, feedback, things for council and the Streets Committee to think about in terms of how you would go about addressing the issue. So that's where this really kind of started. And it helped gain an understanding, define the problem, then we were brought onboard. And as is mentioned, regardless of where this moves forward, PennDOT has a seat at the table. And the reason why is High Street, the two-way portion, and Allegheny Street are both state routes. So nothing can be done without having PennDOT come to the table. So you can see, there's quite a process to go through and we're way over here and we're looking for your input. Before you would ever go as far as engaging, PennDOT, they would like to see that there is kind of a consensus and an agreement as to where they're going, right? Because then the next step is also looking at the viability of the project, which helps then for grant applications, finding the funding to build it. And that's kind of why it's so important to have this kind of community forum now in this early stages. So as we worked with the Borough Manager, Assistant Borough Manager, Streets Committee and the council, we developed those concepts. We actually looked through and vetted a lot of different ideas, had some meetings via Zoom, everybody's favorite new method of communication. And out of that, that's where we've distilled this down to just what's option one and option two, that kind of what I'll call the potential build scenarios, right? We kind of brought those down. That was the consensus that council liked and what the Streets Committee liked, and so we're bringing those before you. But we did vet other things. And so again, it'd be interesting to see if anything that is mentioned by anybody here tonight, maybe jives with some of the things that were vetted before and are not a part of these options right now, but at least we can address those head-on. And again, I want to emphasize that what you see on those boards are very much concept. It's basically a fancified version of pen on paper. We did not have a detailed survey done. We did a simplified topographical survey based off of aerial imagery and some local measurements to be able to get things to scale, right? But we don't have detailed survey. We don't, we're not to the point where you would do any type of traffic analysis or further design mitigation, design analysis. That's not, we're not there yet. And I just want to make sure everybody understands that, that again, I keep emphasizing that, but we're really way over here in the early part of this stage of projects. So what is back there is the two principal concepts. Option one is what I call a ball-bout design. And we'll get into that. Can you hold the question?
Can you bring those up to the council if you see them?
Is that possible? Do you want to bring them up? Yeah.
Can I hand them?
Yeah, Al's helping out.
I think you're going to bring them up here.
Yeah, we can hold them while I guess I speak to the behalf.
Certainly I can.
I can act as a podium.
Hey, I got my, this is great. I get to use my boss as the podium.
All right. So.
So we got option one up. Okay, so for everybody here, I call option one the ball-bout design. And the reason we call it a ball-bout design is because what we're doing is essentially at corner points, we're building out the radius to shorten the crossing distances for pedestrians, for Allegheny or for High Street in this case, right? So you're making this like ball-bout. Now, in traffic calming, that does two things. One, it definitely helps increase pedestrian visibility. Why? Because it brings you out. As you stand today, a curbside, you might be blocked by a parked car or other types of things, vegetation and whatnot. The ball-bout brings you more forward and more into the sightline for someone driving. Also, as I said, it shortens your crossing distance. So your point where you're at risk in crossing the street is a shorter distance. For motorists, traffic calming is a proven measure to slow traffic speeds down, right? Now, looking at this design, I will call out that there are some things that are difficult to do. We have to, you know, we would love to make really sharp curb radiuses, right? But because this is the two state routes, we have to follow and use a designed vehicle. We have to use a truck, actually a tractor-trailer truck, which they are downtown. I've seen them. I'm sure everybody, other people have too. So in other words, we have to accommodate that vehicle. And what does that mean if you're trying to hold this overall geometry? It means that the radiuses that you can turn here are much, we can't make them very tight because then the truck can't navigate it and then it would never get past PennDOT. So although this would help slow some speeds down, I think it would definitely be a visual for people going through on Allegheny Street. In terms of having a significant impact on maybe the turning speeds, like that right turn movement, it's hard to say how much it would slow vehicles down because it still has to be a pretty wide and gradual radius. But it still does accomplish bringing pedestrians out, making them more visible, and this option does, both of them, get rid of that, the existing perpendicular parking. So those conflicts are removed from the equation in these options. So what I want to make sure I also mention is these ideas, what were presented, both this ball-bout and the roundabout, they are not just randomly drawn. We actually, as practicing engineers, we do have, we have lots. We love to publish, make publications, we love to make handbooks, we love to make design guides. Well, from Federal Highway, from PennDOT, there are multitude of what they call countermeasures for safety improvements. And that's where both of these have their roots and their genesis. And within the state, if you ever were curious and you wanted to look up some things, everything's online nowadays, but Pennsylvania has a great traffic calming handbook that gives you a lot of knowledge and a lot of information that we use. I think it's pretty well-written, that makes it easy to digest, but you get an idea of what are the types of countermeasures that PennDOT allows, right? Also, a lot of this stuff, specifically roundabouts, are now getting to be very common in Pennsylvania and are actually integrated into PennDOT's overall design, highway design manual. So we have, that's the standards that we followed when we laid this out. And Federal Highway has a lot of good resources, right? So these aren't just wild brainchild ideas. We are actually basing this off of proven countermeasures. So the second option onboard is what I call is the modern roundabout. So this is what I want to make sure everybody understands, this is not a traffic circle. It's a roundabout. Very easy to confuse them. Sure, maybe some of you here have seen the old, what was it, the Chevy Chase and the European Vacation? How many remember that movie? Oh, folks, Big Ben, roundabout, you know, Big Ben or, big Ben, they were there. That was an old, what they got trapped in was what you would call an old, especially in Europe, they were very prevalent, but it was an old traffic circle. The difference is in traffic circles, every approach into that rounding area is stop control. It may be a traffic signal, maybe stop signs, and you may actually have to stop as you progress around, you have to make maneuvers within it, wholly different. Out of that is really kind of how roundabouts really got their genesis. And these are more of a free flow with the yield condition. You're only going to make right turns. So there is a difference, and I thought I'd make that clear. We can always answer more questions about that. But I thought it would also be important for everybody to understand that this is a very proven countermeasure today. PennDOT's actually tracked the roundabouts as they've been constructed across Pennsylvania. They're looking at, I think there's like 36 particular sites that they've tracked. They've now tracked them for 20 years. And in those 20 years, there's been no fatalities. These are all installed, by the way, at intersections that were flagged, they were bad and they were not safe. They had either signals or they were unsignaled, but they had a really bad crash history with fatalities or crashes with significant, what they call significant injuries.
Could you just with your finger show how a vehicle would go through that?
That's a good point. Sure. So every approach, it's you're only making right turn movements in a roundabout. So if you are on High Street and you wanted to go to, essentially make what today would be a left turn, you're going to yield to the right. So you're going to watch for traffic that's already maybe coming around in the circle. You yield in and you simply go around and then you exit out. Once you're in, you have the right of way exiting out. So all the entering traffic yields to traffic that's already progressing around or exiting out before they enter in themselves. But in terms of the gaps, it's usually a very free-flowing movement.
Is that going to fit a fire truck?
Yes. Yep. Yep. This design, as you see here, has been checked with, again, the design vehicle that we had to check was a truck. So this accommodates tractor trailers around. So you know, we're getting into, I'll point out one thing that happens with a roundabout design is High Street, which is the, these are the, this is the Borough side, the one-way pair is a High Street, would end up being essentially a right-in, right-out movement where you would lose the through movement ability. But that's one of the, you know, things to be vetted with this. So that's the side of getting that. But in concert of that, you gain some, a lot of improvements. These are really good for pedestrians.
So if you're coming from, if you're coming from Spring Creek and you're coming up the hill and you need to go park, say, alongside the courthouse, how do you get there?
You would have to go over on.
Yeah. Use the grid system.
Around.
So then you'd have to go on Spring Street and Bishop Street and then back to Allegheny Street and up?
Correct.
And so those streets then are all qualified to take all that extra traffic? Because Spring Street's horrible.
The volumes up here would be insignificant in addressing the increase in volume on Spring Street. The amount of traffic that does this through movement is negligible.
Have you sat there and watched that?
We have not done any traffic counting. That would come in the design stage if this were decided.
What we do, let me get through and then you all will be well-welcome to come to the podium. So we'll get through this and then we will, I know there's going to be a lot of. No, no, it's okay. I just, I just like to get through it for time purposes and then let everybody get up and make those statements. But again, yes, traffic, at this point, none of these have been evaluated for traffic. What we do have is some pre-COVID analysis that was done, looked at hourly volumes for this intersection. And that, those hourly volumes, there wasn't a significant amount heading through. That's how that, that's dated data. Things change. Just let you know, we don't have current traffic data. And that would be definitely a part of a next step as you progress through. But so this is, again, this is the roundabout design. I would like to mention that generally the design speed for this is 25 miles an hour. In this case, it's actually a little bit lower because we're tightening the radius up. So it's approved, that's why I said that it's a proven measure that slows traffic down. You're not going to be rushing through this or you're going to end up on, as a crash, and you're going to end up on a TV show. One of the benefits of a roundabout also is this consolidates pedestrian crossings. So you're no longer going to have, you don't need the two, you're going to have one on each significant approach. A benefit for both pedestrians and motorists is that as you cross any of these approaches, you have a refuge in the middle, generated because of the way a roundabout design works. So as a pad, you only need to look to your left, cross the middle, and then you can look to your right, cross the same way, right? So you gain some safety there for pedestrians. For motorists, they're only worried about having to pay attention. Once you're in, you're only worrying about when you exit, the one crossing that you're dealing with. So there, again, another, PennDOT has lots of literature. It shows that over the last 20 years, these are, is a proven concept that helps with both vehicle, motorist safety and for pedestrian safety. I'm not here to say that that's what should be building. I want to make sure you are clear on that. This is, again, we're here to just present a concept and get input, not here to push anything, we have no agenda.
I think it's important to add that we're here to listen too.
Yes.
So we're here to listen to your concerns and hopefully quell any rumors or misconceptions or if you have valid concerns, definitely address them. That's why we're here. We're not here to sell you something, we're just here to show you some options with safety in mind.
And the only other thing I want to make mention for both of these, we shaded some area here green. Don't get caught up in, oh, is that grass or what is that? It's, it could be anything. In both instances, when you take away the parking for whether it's option one or this roundabout option, what ends up happening is, is you end up with a very large, if you consider your existing sidewalk that's there today, and you add this area that can be whatever, you have to envision that you could create little mini parklets here. You know, this is, the options are endless. You could have a nice little picnic area for seating or, you know, that's, that's a benefit that both options offer right now with caveat that it takes away that parking. And again, option one, the ball-bout design, is essentially taking what's out there today, the temporary measures that we went through and got vetted with PennDOT and got the approval for, that's really a good live demonstration of what option one would be, minus it actually being constructed with a real curb. So again, all that green, it can be a combination of things. You could do rain gardens, you can increase plantings, you can do little mini parklets with additional seating, whatever. I don't want you to get hung up on that's this grass or what's going on. Again, at the level we're at, it's basically just conceptual and it's basically the same as putting pen to paper and just sketching something up. We just made it a little bit more formal. With that, I think we can open it up for.
Could you just further, please, show them the third, the one change that we've already made that will go back?
Yeah. So, thank you. This, what I labeled as the third option is essentially, I'm calling it a no build, makes very little change. I do want to call attention that it I do want to call attention that it does change, it already shows the relocated crosswalk for High Street. Instead of doing it in a temporary fashion, Borough decided to go ahead and construct that impermanent. And that was through, also through some advice from us, from PennDOT as well. Just again, it gets it away and it was a problematic crosswalk. And the crosswalk that comes from the jewelry store across Allegheny Street there, that's already been realigned as well. So in the no build, those changes are not implemented, but everything else is as it is today.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Time of day of these occurrences that you mentioned, four accidents and one fatality.
Yeah.
Is there a commonality in the time of day that each one of those occurred?
I'd have to get back to you on that. I know the fatality was not during nighttime, that was during daytime.
No, it was very early morning.
It was very early morning, okay, so there you go. I could, I can look that up, but I can't, I don't want to speak, I have the crash data, but we can get an answer for you and supply that. And I want to speak out of line, put it that way.
There's, excuse me, there's always the possibility that some of these accidents may be outliers, that's why they call them accidents. You can't predict when they happen. That one, someone may say it was a fluke, but that family is not going to look at it as a fluke. So you have to understand that that was somewhat in the middle of the two crosswalks as well. I think that the pedestrian was somewhere in this parked area and may have stepped out. I don't know exactly, I did not see the report, I don't know if you did, Jason. But I believe the vehicle that struck her was coming and making that right turn, which as we said, was the high speed maneuver.
She was not in a crosswalk because they left her later until about 11 o'clock and we had court that morning outside because COVID and she stayed there the whole time while we had court. It was very interesting. They did put a tent over her.
Yeah, that's why I've seen the pictures of the tent.
But she was not in a crosswalk. And I understand your concern about her family and a tragic accident is a tragic accident.
Ma'am, ma'am, these are what we want to hear in your comments up at the podium.
And that's fine. I guess my question is, when you talk about the issues, and I just want to clarify, the issues that you're talking about are pedestrian visibility and traffic speed, basically. Those are the two biggest issues.
Go ahead and hit.
Okay.
So do you all have anything else to say at this point?
No, I'd like to just offer that you can have the folks come to the podium and make their comments and we're here to answer.
So you all come up on the podium one at a time and make your comments, we'd love to hear what you have to say.
We've got it.
And I will offer, you know, if you're not comfortable, it's okay if you're not comfortable coming to the podium, making a statement, but please, I mean, that's, we have the forms, they're over on the table.
Yes.
And fill those out. I mean, we value the input.
We're looking for input.
We're looking for.
That's why we're encouraging it, yeah.
Tom Munch, 1337 Joanna Drive at Balfont. When I look at this, I try to reduce this down to the least common denominator, and that's what is, what is the problem? The problem is pedestrian safety. That's why I asked the question of what time of the day did these occurrences happen? What I would suggest, first of all, is speed is, and speed and people not paying attention is basically one of the big deals that causes this whole thing. And I would suggest strongly that we put camera, or not cameras, but like we have out in Harrison Road in Spring Township, which tells you how fast you're going down Harrison Road, and over in State College, over at LeMont, do the same thing. And have a reader system on that, like Spring Township Police has in the back of their car, which would identify anybody that trips a certain level, would take the reading off that, would take the reading off that plate or whatever. And the other thing is cameras, because at any time of the day or night, the borough is subject to having issues. And if we have enough cameras around to pick that up, we have plenty of evidence that we've got issues with people speeding or whatever it is, and we've got methods to take care of that. But the bottom line is, there has to be consequences for bad decisions. And it can't be just a slap on the wrist and put them back out next week, okay? And there has to be a situation we could prove, we could prove it with cameras, we could prove it with the, with the readers, and then sign a fine or whatever it is. And that would, once that word gets out, trust me, down Berkeley Springs in West Virginia, it's 25 miles an hour, that's what you better be doing. That's basically what I want to say. The problem is pedestrian safety and readjusting all these areas around here to try and compensate to slow the vehicles down automatically is not the answer we're looking for.
I'll just add to that, it bothers me that people will slow down for the threat of enforcement rather than hitting a pedestrian. So like you said, if you put something out there that discourages them, that's enforcement, though, that is strictly.
Yeah, and I will mention, that is another proven, there is, if you have consistent enforcement, and that's the issue, right?
Well, we can't expect our policemen to be there on the corner every, every five seconds. So at the end of the day, if we have these kinds of features, it will help us in a number of ways, not only in pedestrian safety, but also maybe other issues, burglary or whatever. But restricting the amount of area that goes around there, we're trying to build Balfont, we're trying to make Balfont accessible, but tractor trailers that have to come in early in the morning and deliver, school buses that come through there every day have to have mobility. And it's not, there's not a lot of room there to take away.
That's it, Tom, thank you.
Thank you. May I just say something, a good time for the segue. I got a message from Chief Weaver who wanted to be here tonight, which I thought would be appropriate, but he has, both his parents are in the hospital right now, so he's up there dealing with that. So he apologizes for not being here. All right, continue.
Who's next?
My name is Barbara Dan, I live at 225 South Monroe Street. The information that Chief Weaver's April 19th report to council, the information contained in Chief Weaver's April 19th report to council, which was based upon a 10-year period from 2010 to 2019, and regarding vehicular traffic in the downtown district of Balfont, indicated a couple of numbers. Over that 10-year period, on High Street, we had over 9 million vehicles. On Bishop Street, we had over 17 million. And on Water Street, we had over 39 million. There were other numbers, but I thought those were really interesting and some pretty high numbers. During that same 10-year period in Balfont Borough, there were a total of 33 vehicle pedestrian accidents, or a little over three per year. Six of those occurred at the High Street-Allegheny Street intersections or right around there. About one vehicle pedestrian accident every 20 months in that intersection. Tragically also in 2020, there was one fatality. But when taken as a whole, the report suggests that the intersection located at the Diamond is a relatively safe one. There are bound to be accidents, this is definitely a reality. As long as pedestrians and vehicles come within close proximity of one another, there's always a possibility for accidents. I'm not opposed to taking corrective action when a safety concern is raised, or in fact, believe it's one of the primary responsibilities of council. Nor am I opposed to making changes to enhance safety at a location that may be otherwise considered fairly safe. Spending $30,000 on a temporary fix to an arguably minor problem is quite frankly irresponsible. Before deciding to spend such an incredible amount of money, what other steps were taken to address the problem, using resources we already possessed or which may have been less expensive? I don't believe that any changes are needed at the Diamond. However, however, in the interest of increasing or enhancing safety there, I would suggest considering, the consideration of some of the following after first removing the unsightly delineators and white curbing. They are as follows. Number one, raised crosswalks to provide a physical reminder to drivers to slow down. The curb bumpouts at the Diamond on both sides, which would permanently remove the seven, seven parking spaces previously located there. I think that's a great idea, it does slow the traffic coming around there. Possibly, and that would also possibly create an area to be used for patio seating. Think we could use better lighting at all the intersections. On the downhill side of the courthouse on High Street, consider posting that all traffic must turn right onto Allegheny Street from East High. Also at the intersection of High and Allegheny next to State Burger, consider posting all traffic must turn right.
Post, Tom, talk, Barbara.
Thank you. If I can also say one more thing, I did have a Balfont resident who asked me to read a letter, is that appropriate at this time?
Yeah.
Hers is even longer than mine, so I'm sure I'll hit my three minutes. Her name is Brenda Reichert and she lives at the Brockerhoff. I'm writing this letter about the Diamond. First of all, I do not want anyone to get hurt or have an accident. This is my opinion, I feel that a roundabout is not the right way to go. First of all, the area is too small. I have a feeling that it would cause a lot more problems. I may be wrong, but I don't think so. I really feel that one way to stop accidents, especially at night, would be to put better, brighter streetlights in. The current lights are great for Victorian image, but they are not bright enough. Having a police presence when they are not busy, I remember when the police were always in town and they always used to walk to the streets at night and check the stores, see that the stores were locked. I also remember they used to help people cross the street. I know that times have changed, just a suggestion to have a police presence when they are available. What about if you made West High Street from Spring Street to Allegheny Street one way? It seems to me in the last year and a half that three, that the three that I know of who got hit, and unfortunately one died, all happened on the side, turning down to High Street and not coming up High Street. People who would normally turn down can either use Howard Street or Bishop, this is just a suggestion. I mean, ask the fire, EMS, and police if this would be okay. These barriers that are up now are not right for downtown Balfont. First of all, they are taking away a lot of parking spaces, the ones in front of the Brockerhoff are more of a hindrance to the residents of the Brockerhoff with only one space now for loading and unloading. There is usually someone parked there with their flashers on, picking up or taking out food from one of the restaurants, and it makes it difficult for the rest, for the residents that need to be picked up or dropped off. The sign, the sign there says the Brockerhoff is posted for the Brockerhoff tenants, but it's, if, only if you keep the barriers up. Another problem with these barriers, I'm in a scooter and have had problems, especially at night, crossing Allegheny Street, and these barriers have obstructed my view. I mean, on the side of Allegheny Street by the Brockerhoff over to the court enix. I really try not to go out at night unless I have someone with me. Are these barriers good for emergency vehicles? I know one day an ambulance came here to the Brockerhoff and had to park down by the walk. With winter coming, I'm concerned about the snowplows. The barriers really take away from the look of downtown. These are my opinions, I hope you take a few minutes to think about what I have said. A friend of mine made this suggestion that to put a concrete barrier up so that cars cannot turn right from North Allegheny onto West High, make it a planter and plant flowers in it. Thank you for your time, sincerely Brenda Reichert.
We have two seconds.
Made it, thank you.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Cooper, I live at 387 East Lynn Street, I have an office at 17 East Bishop Street, and I also go to the courthouse very frequently for work. The one thing that no one, and you guys do a great job. I respect what you do, you've been given the job and you did a lovely job. Does it work for Balfont? I think most of us don't think so, or we wouldn't all be here. The one thing that no one has actually said about the white barriers is that they're hideous. And if they could be removed as soon as possible, I think everybody would really appreciate that. I think it's dangerous for people and nobody knows where the crosswalks start and where they stop because you're out in the street as a result of that bump out. As far as the parking spaces by Rod Beard's office and by the Faith Center are concerned, with the new parking plan and the red parking spots, there's no parking downtown for someone who isn't there all the time. I just don't even understand it. This is supposed to be a town that respects its Victorian heritage, that respects its history, and you talked about project history, but we have a history of having a diamond. You see those photos of the parades of all of the veterans that came home? Those all took place at the Diamond. We all want the Diamond to stay because that's what makes up Balfont. Balfont has a diamond. The traffic circle, trust me, people are going to just, it'll make more accidents than, or the roundabout will make more accidents than we've already had. This, in my mind, is a knee jerk reaction to one fatality. Was it tragic? It was, it was very tragic. Anytime somebody dies unnecessarily, that's tragic. But we also are just going to have accidents. She wasn't in a crosswalk, and so people just do stupid stuff sometimes. And no amount of traffic roundabouts and no amount of bumpouts are going to change that. But the character of our town with those white barricades is, if they're not gone by Victorian Christmas, I just, I mean, I can't even imagine why that wouldn't happen. The bus stop now stops in the middle of the road because there's a big white thing there. That's crazy and dangerous. So I don't understand why, because of one accident, suddenly there's all these knee jerk responses. If you want to slow traffic down, raise the crosswalks. That'll slow traffic down. You can raise the crosswalks down at the bank and that will do the same thing. So we slow some traffic down, we put some better lighting up and so that you can see people, and let's make those kind of changes, less invasive changes, before we go about doing some massive construction job in the middle of town that's going to ruin the character of our town, sorry guys, and is going to take parking away that we need. I just think that there needs to be a little bit more thought before we go doing all this stuff that's going to cost all this money.
Tom, talk, Steph.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Randy Giddick, I live at Sign Road. First of all, I don't think this is a knee jerk meeting. Now, it was terrible that that lady died, and it doesn't really matter if she was in a crosswalk or not. Those four parking spaces, they've been a safety hazard, you know, for years, you know, next to Plums going down the hill, and they, they should have been taken out years ago and I hope the borough never puts them back in, no matter what we do. You know, people get out of their cars there and they can either step up on the sidewalk or they can go wherever just to get away from their car, and I think that's probably what happened to that lady. And it wasn't her fault, it was the person that's speeding, that was the problem. But, no, I'm not really in favor of roundabouts, because I think they might cause more problem than, you know, make it things worse. Because what's going to happen if you have six or eight, 10 cars coming at one time? You know, everyone's left, right, up and down. And I see in the, in the middle of some of them, there's some yield signs, like coming up High Street, I don't know if there's going to be a stop sign to make a right. But, but I think you're going to end up with a lot of little fender benders, a lot of little wrecks. And if someone wrecks there on a really busy day and something's going on like Victorian Christmas, if you have two or three cars wrecking there, you could tie up that intersection for maybe an hour, you know, till you get tow chucks. But I'd rather see clear across the Diamond there, speed bumps put in, just one big speed bump, like a black, a blacktop speed bump. You put one in down on Potter Street by the train station, that looks real nice. And I understand if you'd put brick, a brick speed bump clean across Allegheny, that'd probably be a lot of money, but Faith Church up behind the high school, they have speed bumps in their little driveway. So if Faith Church can put a blacktop speed bump in, I don't know why the borough can't do it.
I will offer one thing you have to remember is, PennDOT has a seat at the table.
Yeah.
So some measures, they will just outright reject.
Right.
They might be valid.
And I don't understand, because they're all over State College and they're all over Penn State, you know?
Right, but those are private, you're looking at it as, you're associating, okay, I've seen this, but they're on private roads.
Yeah, I know.
So I'm just saying, sometimes PennDOT can be challenging to work with.
PennDOT always gives us problems, but anyway, I think, you know, you either have to stop traffic or you really need to slow it down. And I think either a red light or a speed bump is the only thing that's going to do it. Because on these roundabouts, if you have sense of slow Because on these roundabouts, if you have, since a slow day on a weekend, or anytime late at night, if you only have one single car coming through that roundabout, they can still speed through there, you know? And then, and then, you know, they could hit someone, so, uh, and, and the ball boats, is that, okay, but the ball boats, you don't need to take them bushes out of them bulbs, they're all over town, 'cause they're, and also the flags in front of these stores, they're all distracting people. Thanks a lot.
I will bring it to folks, if you wanna take a look, at some point, I've worked through comments, but Ralph did bring out a sample of how the stamped asphalt works and how it gets milled, and, you know, these are flush with the roadway surface, but it's another way of making pedestrian crossings stand out.
Hi, I'm Kara Leonori. I figured I'd come here to kind of represent the youth, sort of, of Belfont, because I look around and I don't see a lot of people my age, so, um, I figured I'd put my input in. I've lived in Belfont my entire life, I've known the courthouse, I'm in marching band, I'm in Girl Scouts, I, I basically spend all my time downtown. And I've also traveled a lot, and I know, I've been to a lot of places with roundabouts and seen that they are very effective, like, in small places, too, like, one example I could think of is in the Bahamas, small little islands, they, almost all of their stop, like, intersections are roundabouts, and I don't think I've ever heard of an accident. So I'm just, yeah, and with a decorative kind of thing, I think someone mentioned, where we have to keep our Victorian history. Our name is derived from the French beautiful fountain. A roundabout is a perfect candidate for a fountain. So, you know, if you wanna go the decorative way, I know the Diamond is like a staple, but a fountain would be more fitting, I feel like, 'cause it's a beautiful fountain. So, I'm blanking on most of my points, but obviously, that's my father, too, so I...
For, for the record, I had no idea she was coming.
Exactly, this is a surprise.
Very proud of her, though. And she is learning to drive, by the way, so she can, you can add how, how challenging it is to drive.
It is, and from personal experience, I know a lot of the traffic flow that people were talking about, the major traffic I see, at least after school, happens at the intersection before Tallyrand, I don't know street names, I'm very bad with street names, so, and the traffic up by, what street is that?
This is Allegheny.
Allegheny Street, okay. The traffic by Allegheny Street, at least not after school, isn't too bad. I know it can get busy during, like, rush hour, but, um, just, yeah, so...
The left turn is hard, though.
The left turn is very hard. I hate left turns. Yeah, so, I figured, and roundabouts, I have never driven one myself, but they seem easy enough, once you get the hang of it, they're pretty easy to maneuver, and they actually make a lot of sense. Um, I know a lot of places have started to integrate them more within their roadways, like, I know they're a big thing in Europe, and, again, in the Bahamas, and also, someone said, in Pennsylvania, they're starting to become more popular, so I think, honestly, that should show you, they are a good option, and especially because we've had accidents here, and it is very prone to accidents, it would be a good idea to put a roundabout there. I really like roundabouts, too. Is that my time?
Tom, stop.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Joanne, up for Nor, North Spring Street.
I'm just concerned about, the pedestrian has the right of way. I'm downtown every day, and I see people come and go, and I go. If those, uh, those cars come up that roundabout, they're gonna not stop, 'cause there's no reason to, how does a pedestrian get across the street?
Well, they, they still have the right of way.
You're sure?
There's, there's no stop coming.
I could just see this traffic, and it does line up.
No, they, there's, there's pedestrian signs, and the pedestrians do legally have the right of way.
Well, just so the pedestrian's still acknowledged.
Absolutely, yes.
They're still getting run over.
One thing that, point out, Pennsylvania's a yield state, so you, you, motors have to yield to pedestrians in a, in a crosswalk.
Yeah, but when they're just like that with no stop signs or anything, I could just see them.
Right, but also, it doesn't give a pedestrian the right just to step right out in the middle of traffic, you still have the responsibility to, to look. And the, the, the one nature of a roundabout is you only have to look one direction. One, you're only looking, your focus is only on one direction.
Well, people talk about the one down in Washington DC.
Joanne, can you, Joanne, can you come back up? You still have a couple more.
People talk about the one in Washington DC, but do pedestrians down there go across in that area? I mean, they have ten line, ten...
Not sure which one you're talking about.
Do you call it circle, probably?
I'm not sure. My, my sister-in-law got lost on it.
Yeah, that, well, remember, DC has a mix. They actually have one set of traffic circles, not a roundabout.
Oh, well, maybe that's what I'm thinking about.
And we need to differentiate, they have a completely different functionality than a roundabout.
Well, for the record, I'm not for the roundabout. I think we're too small.
That's fine, yeah, I'm not here to argue that.
My name is John Luckovich. I live at Elm Street in Belfont. I'm also a business owner in downtown Belfont. I've been there for almost fifty years, and I've seen it all. The biggest problem I see is speed through the town all the time. They're never slowing down, there needs to be something, even with all these improvements, if they go through, you're still gonna have people speeding, so there has to be something that physically keeps the cars from going as fast as they do. The barriers that are up now need to be removed, they are a hindrance. I have customers every day complain about them, they're hard to see around, they're hard to park, we have a handicap stall in front of our place, it is almost impossible for somebody to parallel park getting in there if there's a car behind them. The, it's too close, and your thought on the bump out, that the pay, or the pedestrian has less space to travel across, that is true, but the visibility is the same, because there's a car still parked right where that bump out is. And I've seen it, I've had customers tell me, they do not see the pedestrian, they see the white sticks, and they're distracted by the white sticks, so I think they need to be removed, and I am not for the big bump out. First of all, lighting needs to be improved before you do anything else. Now, I noticed there was one light down where the new crosswalk is, it seemed much brighter, somebody must've changed a bulb. It looks much better, but they're still horrible, and we have, every intersection in this town needs more lighting. The lighting to drive through town is horrible. We need to improve it, whether it looks Victorian or not, it's a safety factor, it needs to be taken care of. I'm trying to think of...
I've heard a lot of people say those white delineators are, and I, they are strictly temperate.
Oh, no, I know that, and people know that.
And I believe there are way more out there than need to be, so we could, we could probably remove a lot of them. They're strictly there for snowplows to know where the curb is. Really, what would end up in the ball dot situation would be a low curb, so it would be just like a sidewalk.
And if there is any way to bring some additional parking every day for fifty years, parking, 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 there is no place to park. And I don't know what the actual solution will be, but those four spaces around the corner from where I'm located, they are sorely missed, and I know it's dangerous to back out of them, pull into them, but if traffic was slowed down, and I do appreciate the new crosswalks, though. Straight across is better than diagonal, absolutely, that was a good improvement.
We, we do not in any way deny that losing parking is an issue, it absolutely is, and it's a concern, so.
Yes.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Bridget Torso. I live on Caparella Drive, and for twenty-one years, I lived in a town with a roundabout. And I can tell you now, there's no way I'm taking my sandwich down and sitting there and picnicking close to a roundabout, okay? I avoided that roundabout every single day. You can tell me that the traffic's all one way and it takes your turn, well, you get people coming into town that have never been here before, they don't know that. We had people at night that drove right through the middle of the roundabout, across the grass, between the trees, because they didn't know what they were doing, okay? I was never so glad to get out of any town in my life, all right? Not only that, I was living ten miles from Gettysburg, and if you've ever gone through theirs, it's like risking your life every time you go through it.
That's not a roundabout, by the way. Gettysburg's a traffic.
It's a traffic circle, yes, but I'm just telling you what it's like, but the one where I lived was a roundabout, and it was, it was absolutely terrible. I'd never wanna go back there again.
Can I, can I, may I ask, which one you're...
I lived in New Oxford.
New Oxford.
Ten miles east of Gettysburg, yeah. And, you know, we had somebody, like I said, come up at night, up Route Thirty, didn't make their right, and drove right through the roundabout. And we had parking all around the roundabout, the whole, the whole way around the square, we had parking, and, I mean, there can be issues with it, there's gonna be accidents, and you're gonna have people speeding all the time. I've done research on road rage, you know, people's everyday habits aren't gonna change, unfortunately. If you're a speeder, you're a speeder, you know, people get angry, pedestrians aren't careful, they're on their cell phones, they're talking, they're not watching, you know, is it, is it the pedestrian's fault, is it the driver's fault? There's fault everywhere, and I don't know what the answer is to change that, but as far as a roundabout, you know, we, we who have lived, like here in Belfont, we're used to the Diamond, and we're used to the way it is, and we know, you know, what to do. It's when you start getting a lot of your tourists in and people from out of town that don't know what this roundabout's gonna do. You know, we used to sit there and go, wait a minute, no, it's not your turn, it's my turn, and then everybody was, everybody was pulling into it at the same time, you know, it was crazy. So, that's just my, one person's opinion. Thanks.
Thank you, Bridget.
My name is Mary Jo Bolden, and I live on Zion Road, but it's not safe to walk on 550, so I come into town and walk.
Right.
So, um, I'm not in favor of the roundabout. I've been in areas where they're very functional, keep traffic moving, and my question, and I, I might be a little late to the game, but the lower crosswalk where the accident happened close, is there any reason why we have to have that crosswalk? I know it's proximity to the Y, but why do we need a crosswalk at the Diamond and another crosswalk?
Another question.
Amen.
The lighting is poor. At, at the crosswalks that we currently have, there are plants, they're real cute, but you can't see people in plants. Gotta lower the plants. Um, the Diamond, I grew up here, I've lived here pretty much all my life, I like the way it is, but I do, I'm in favor of progress for safety, but do we really have to change that much? I mean, let's slow the roll, and those white things are hideous. Hideous, they gotta go. It's awful.
Just to add to that, it, it is an all, an option to reduce the number of crosswalks in that, but you're also, you're gonna make other people unhappy by doing this, so it's, all the pros and cons need to be weighed.
Yeah. Okay.
Hi, my name is Patty. I live at 129 West High Street in the rear apartment, and I'm just gonna give you a scenario. I almost got wiped out twice by Carrie Benninghoff's off, office, trying to cross over High, High Street, and then the car's coming down Spring Street making a right there. Like, my monitor says it's okay for me to walk, and I'm looking at that, but I also have to turn around, I've learned, and look, because that person making that right-hand turn is, they're not paying any attention to me. They're coming around that turn.
Are you talking Spring Street from Pizzamia?
Yeah.
The other one, okay.
Yeah.
So turning right off, off High Street.
Yeah, Carrie Benninghoff's office. So what is there, do you, I mean, is, is there anything set up to prevent something like that from happening with these plans that you have? I mean, are you, are there gonna be monitors for pedestrians? Are they gonna be making their right-hand turns without paying any attention to our monitors that are telling us to walk?
You're talking the "don't walk" lights?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right.
With the roundabout, there would be no, it's, those only go in unsignalized intersections. This is unsignalized as it stands and as proposed in either of these alternatives, so...
Okay. Yeah, there's quite a few places in Belfont where that same scenario plays out, you know, you, tells you, you can walk, and the person making the right-hand turns not paying attention to that, they're just weren't worrying about their turn.
Right, and, and I agree, that's a problem, and, and my young driver here knows that that's something that she has to be aware of. It's by law, you have to make sure the crosswalk is clear, too, so unfortunately...
But a lot of people just don't know how to drive, they just don't care. This is no nice way to put it.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wondered, yeah.
Yeah, no, these, these are, there's no traffic signal.
There's no lights, no, no crossing signals, no, okay.
No, these are what we would call unsignalized options.
Okay, so I might not get killed there, I might.
We would hope not.
Be a safer place to cross, okay. All right, thank you.
I, I know I didn't take up my two minutes, just one other thing that Tom had said about the enforcement of the speed by video, and what was the other thing you said, Tom? Video and speed?
Oh, the wise readers.
Yes.
Yeah, radar.
Yeah, we gotta slow them down, we gotta slow down people coming through town.
But there has to be consequences for people getting stopped.
Absolutely.
Good evening, thank you for holding this meeting. My name is Rich Fornicollin, I live at 185 East Beaver Street, Belfont. Belfont is known for our Victorian heritage, including our architecture, the Big Spring, the Diamond, and our welcoming community. The Diamond is a pillar in this community, it's iconic to Belfont. There's a reason people stop on buses coming across the state, to stop in Belfont to see our community, and I believe the Diamond and the uniqueness of our downtown is one of those reasons. I see the problem as being distracted drivers and speed. Phones, you can stand down in front of John's store or the Diamond Deli anytime and, and see people coming through those intersections, they're on their phone, not Bluetooth, or they're texting, or they're doing something that has nothing to do with paying attention to the road. So I think that, you know, the, the speed and the distractions are the big thing. I'm not for a roundabout. One of the things I, I didn't like about the roundabout is the lack of access to High Street. I don't think going from Spring to Bishop to Allegheny to get to High, there's a lot of traffic, a lot. If you, when you do the counts, there are a lot of people, as Mrs. Cooper indicated, they come up High Street, cross Allegheny, and go up the hill that way to get out of, you know, to get wherever they're going, Parfue Heights or whatever. So I, and the other thing I don't like about the roundabout is, ever since I've been a boy, um, the, there's been a market in downtown Belfont on Saturday mornings, whether it's the Audrey's, whether it's, it's Gary Horner, whether it's Boyd Coral, farmers come in, and I know there's an alternate down at the, at, at the, Gambell Mill, right, at the Gambell Mill parking lot, but that has been an iconic spot for Saturday morning markets, and I'm sure that the roundabout will capture that, capture that in front of the courthouse there, capture those parking spaces that are now marked for police. Another thing that no one's mentioned that I have noticed, and this is why I'm not in favor of eliminating that second crosswalk, I, as Donnie can tell you, a lot of people in here, I've been a lifelong member of the YMCA. I regularly traverse High Street, going from the YMCA to the Annex and back and forth. Since those diverters have been put in there, I have witnessed several near misses, because I believe the traffic has increased. Those parking stalls actually ironically serve as a bit of a buffer to speed coming around there. Most people realize they're there, they're traveling downtown Belfont, and they slow up, so as to avoid anybody backing out or pulling into those parking spaces. So the four parking spaces that you're, that are on either side, right, actually act, I know this sounds crazy, but it's somewhat of a buffer for people. Now, it's like a Grand Prix race course. I mean, people come off Allegheny, zoom down High Street.
Richie, just because you're a friend, I give you next week's chance.
All right, so that, that's, that's the thing I wanted, you know, to point out, is the speeds actually increase. Thank you, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
The one, the one thing I do wanna point out, somebody at the table wanted us to emphasize that the roundabout... that the roundabout alternative, maybe this wasn't made clear, would be a single lane, so you would not have the dual lanes going through on Allegheny, which right now, is anybody coming on Allegheny, turning left down High Street, knows that that is near impossible to make in the PM rush. So that eliminates that left turn, and it turns it into a right turn. So that's, again, I'm not pushing the roundabout, I'm just, I want to make sure you understand that it's not two lanes through here, it may look...
If that's a single lane, I'm sorry, if that's a single lane on Allegheny, wouldn't you have, you know, wouldn't you have a whole mess of that traffic backed up from Allegheny down to Bishop? You know, if you had to stop and wait for a left-handed turn down High, wouldn't that...
Remember, there are no left turns with a roundabout. All left turns are eliminated, they are all right turns now. That's the beauty of a modern roundabout.
So if you're coming off of Bishop on Allegheny, you can't make a left now on the Diamond that way?
So, wait, are you talking this way?
Yeah.
So this, no, you can, you, you would turn right into the circle, you'd come around, and then you'd turn right out of the circle, because you're actually, you're coming around, so you're turning that left turn into a right turn.
I'll, I'll tell you what, I, I have, for those of you that are interested, Pendot, you know, you're not the first group of concerned citizens saying, what, roundabouts are terrible. Every, every community, I mean, I, I'm from, from Harrisburg, Town of Linglestown, Pennsylvania, went through the same, I mean, there was a lot of controversy, right? The genesis of the last twenty years of working, with Pendot working and addressing and finding those common threads, is they actually have some really nice videos, animated videos that show you functionally how roundabouts work. So if anybody wants to see that, I, I have no qualms here, once we're through comment period, I can pull that up and we can play those videos, and then you can kind of get an idea of how a roundabout functions and how it would work here. So, just wanted to offer that.
My name's Jacob Mann, I live at 134 East High Street. For reference, that's the, the uphill one-way on High Street. I am a big advocate of roundabouts in general, but I absolutely hate this one, just because of the extra steps it would take me to get home from work every day. Personally, I don't mind the barriers that are downtown right now. I think that, personally, I feel safer when I'm walking my dog. I mean, that's where I walk, I walk from my home down to Tallyrand, kind of around and back, so crossing the street in those areas with extra curb space, extra room to look and see where traffic's coming from has made me feel safer. I really just would hate to have to traverse around town to get home. I like the, the curb bump-out option because of that extra curb space. Living in Belfont my whole life, I mean, parking's been an issue, you know, fifteen years ago, it's going to be an issue fifteen years from now, so losing four or five parking spaces, I don't think is a massive thing that's going to be a huge detriment to the businesses, especially with the work that the borough has done with revamping the, the multi-use lots throughout town. That's my two cents, and I really appreciate you having this meeting for us and giving us a voice in the, in the matter. Thank you.
Where would you like these phones? I unfortunately have to run.
Just leave it on the tables.
Thank you very much.
I'm so confused how you answered Randy's question about if you're on Bishop and you want to make a left and get down High, because if you come across Allegheny...
This is Bishop here, right?
Right.
Okay.
So you're coming across Allegheny.
Mm-hmm. This way?
No, the other way.
Okay, so by the Cadillac building?
No.
Exactly. Coming this way. You're coming off of East Bishop.
Coming this way, you say there's no left turns. His question was, how do you get down High Street? So there...
Yes. Yeah.
But those are lefts.
No. It's, it's, it's a right coming into the circle.
It's left.
It's a left exit.
Once you're in a circle, there's no left or right.
Right. There is no left in a circle.
When you're in the circle, when you come around to get out of the circle, you actually turn right.
It's basically still a left turn.
No.
This is why a roundabout's not going to work.
Again, we, I have video. Yeah. The conflict with the left turn is eliminated, so.
Hi, Gary Hoover, 136 Burnside Street. Just, just a couple of questions. Right now, there's parking in front of the courthouse, and Rich alluded to the farmer's market, but that space is also used by law enforcement. When we bring tour buses into town, that's where they park. In addition to that, when there's things like the crews, that's where the stage is set up. And those of you who live in town, when there's a substantial snowstorm, you know, there's a pretty good pile of snow put in that, that space. Where's the snow going to go? You know, when, when there's a storm? And the last comment I would make is that the bulge out does squeeze that unloading zone in front of the Brockerhoff. You know, it really cuts that down. When, when you come around the bulge out, like you're coming from High Street up, and you make the right around onto Allegheny Street, then you have to navigate that bump, and then there's like one parking space immediately on the other side that seniors would have to swing into to be picked up or dropped off, right in there, yeah. And if there's parking at the first metered spot, that's a really tiny area to get in. The, the other concern I would have is that eliminating that lower crosswalk on High Street, people are going to cross there anyway. Only now they won't have the protection of a crosswalk. You know, so part of this is not just slowing traffic down, it's smarting pedestrians up. You know, and of course, traffic does have the responsibility of yielding to pedestrians, but that does not give them the right to, without even looking, just step right out in the middle of traffic and bring everything to a screeching halt, maybe cause an accident by doing that. I, I think pedestrians can even be cited if they do that. They're responsible for making sure there's a reasonable break in traffic before they step out. And that's a smart safety strategy, because whether you're pushing, yeah, I had the right to do that or not, you know, whether the pitcher hits the stone or the stone hits the pitcher, it's going to be bad for the pitcher. You know, so that, that point has to be made to pedestrians, they have to be a partner in this process too, and do their part for safety. They can't just, with impunity, put it all on the motors and say, well, I'll just step right out, and bam, you got to, you got to turn right around and stop on a dime and hope nobody hits you from behind when you do that. So I, I think those are some considerations. There's a functional part to have, maintaining those spaces in front of the courthouse that goes out beyond just, just the traffic flow. There's the, the snow in the winter, there's use of the farmer's market, there's the stage during the cruise, there's bringing tour buses into town, which we hope to have a lot more of again, so those are kind of things I'd like to see built into the thinking of whatever is done. But I do salute the effort to create a better safety situation downtown. Thank you.
I suppose I should step up here. Lori Haynes, I'm the executive director at Center County Housing Authority. So I have a vested interest because of the Brockerhoff. A letter was read by one of our fellow attendees here. Barbara read a letter regarding Brenda Reichert. As a matter of fact, the tragedy that happened, I do believe that individual was going to see one of our residents at the Brockerhoff to care for him. So, very concerning, one of my residents in a scooter was hit, I think she broke her collarbone. There have been accidents that have happened. So I do feel there needs to be some of these issues that have been addressed by everyone here, whether it's lighting, or buildups, bumpouts. I don't really think I'm in favor of the roundabout either, but I would ask that you keep in mind, we're running a business there at the Brockerhoff, and State Burger has lost spaces. I don't know, Sean and Dustin are not here, to speak of how this may impact their business, being the closest right there to the Diamond. I, I just, I'm glad we're having these meetings, they're very constructive, and, and I hope we can all come to some consensus. If I were to have to pick an option, I think it would be option number one. And if there's any concrete work or sidewalk work that's going to be done as a result of this, I'd ask the borough and the council to please consider communicating with us at the housing authority, so we could perhaps collaborate together to replace walk all around State Burger, all the way out to the walk. Because there was a sign erected right outside, historic sign, that we knew nothing about until one day it just appeared. So just some more communication with us to keep us in the loop, since we are part of Allegheny Street at the Brockerhoff house, so thank you.
I'm Scott Mauger, and I live at 32080 Slam Street. I like how the crosswalk was moved down closer to the YMCA. I believe that gives the traffic, coming onto High Street, a better view of pedestrians trying to cross the street. Now, if drivers would just yield to the pedestrians in the crosswalk at the new location. I, however, want the reflectors moved. I understand, I understand that it's only temporary, but they don't do any good safety-wise, especially at night. Your headlights hit those, and you actually miss a person who is standing waiting to go across the street. I've seen that several times. To be seen in those crosswalks, you literally have to walk out into the street to the edge of the reflectors for traffic to stop, which most of the time, traffic does not. The design also narrows the streets, which I think will be an issue when there's snowplowing. I'm also not in favor of putting a curb in or a roundabout. Once the reflectors are removed, return the much-needed parking spaces, and start ticketing drivers that don't yield the right-of-way to pedestrians. I walk all over Belfont every day after work, and most times it crosswalks without a traffic light and a walk button. I have to wait for traffic to go past before I cross. People do not stop for you. As a side note, I hope the reflectors are removed before the holiday season. They look horrible. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Hi, Jerry Clishtry, 16080 Curtain Street. I submitted a couple of comments a couple of months ago when this all started, just from some family travel. We were on some pretty busy intersections in Beach towns, and, you know, the end of the crosswalk, you hit a, you hit a button and the lights flashed, and those lights drew attention to people who were traveling on the roadway that they had to, like a school bus, you had to slow down and stop. I think a couple of sets of those around the Diamond would be more than sufficient for folks. It gives them ample time to cross the road. You know, spending a million dollars on a roundabout that in the first week or two we could have another accident, and are we back here again trying to figure out what changes need to be made? I'll be happy to provide that information back again. I don't know, it might be a Pendot issue because of the, the state highway, whether those are even...
You're, you're, what you're referencing, for, for people, I know what you're talking about, they're, they're called rectangular rapid flashing beacons, so it's, you would see a, a light bar, it's mounted below, typically below a pedestrian crossing sign. In Pennsylvania, they're not authorized for use within an intersection.
Excuse me? I, I brought it up to council that there's one in Lewis Town, and the other one is somewhere in the middle of state somewhere. There's two projects that they have approved.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, RFPs are around, they're, and they're already implemented here in State College even. They just put one in on Valley Vista for the middle school, crossing to the, to the park there, so if you're familiar with, they did that, there's one, there's a great installation there, but...
And I, and I think that solves a prob, I mean, even at some of the other intersections, I mean, when you get down by the waterfront, you know, that traffic's coming through there pretty fast, and while we as pedestrians are looking at the crosswalk signs, a lot of times those people who are sitting at the lights, because the way they're framed, have difficulty seeing them. These things are flashing, they get your attention, and if, if you, if you are texting or doing something and you're in an accident, it is definitely a driver error. And personally, who, how, whoever got those approved, the, the barriers, whatever you're calling them downtown, however that got approved, I would like that person to come see me, because I've had problems with the Belfont Historical Society, and if that got through the Belfont Historical Society, I'd like to, I'd like to talk to those people, because I could use some help with a few projects I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jerry.
Maybe to clarify, those RFID's, those flashing lights, they're allowed to be used in Pennsylvania, but only currently, only at mid-block crossings. What Jason was saying is they're not technically approved for intersections, so...
Pendot wouldn't authorize an installation of RFP within an intersection.
Does that could be on the lower one?
Yeah, you, yes.
Example would be the lower one.
But not, not for these. Yes, correct.
And that's, the lower one was really the issue.
Spot, the one, spot.
Even, even one of those in town would be better than nothing, you know?
Yeah. Thank you. Good idea.
Anyone else? I just had a quick question, and I know, you know, the answer's going to be no, and it's, but when we're way back in the fifties...
Sir, is it possible, please, come up the podium so Cinec can get your voice?
Okay, sorry.
That's okay.
Yeah, two things. Well, the one I brought up for years to the borough, and I, I understand what you're saying, you don't get any money back, but everyone here is complaining, everyone complains in town, no parking. I don't know how you could ever do it financially, but when, if you could ever build a parking deck down in the, down in that municipal lot behind a Waffle Shop, that would solve a lot of problems, especially with renters and everything. And I, I know that's probably a hundred percent never going to happen, but the other thing, I don't know if you could even do it, but, I wonder if you could ever bring back the old slant parking just on High Street? You know how it's parallel now, but you would double the, you would double the parking space probably, but you're making the road narrower, so I don't know if you could ever even think about that, but that might solve a lot of parking issues.
Angle parking.
Yeah, angle parking. You'd mess up your meters, but, you know, thanks a lot. You have three minutes, man. Don't start me yet, I'm still walking.
I just want to thank the residents of Belfont and the council for taking this under consideration, and the residents for coming out and helping to help council make decisions for our borough to make it a better place to live. I personally think that, well, I, I know the statistics, and there was a ten-year period that we looked at from Pendot. Senate Statistics, the chief gave to council, and that was from 2010 to 2019. I did ransom numbers, it's about 1,300,000 cars went through that intersection where we're talking about on the Diamond in that period of time, and there were zero, zero fatalities. I caution council, I have cautioned council before, and I'll caution council again in the future. I know we're going to have a turnover here pretty soon, but we need to, we've had, we had one fatality, and not to, not to diminish that fatality, but we had one fatality and then another incident about two weeks later, and red flags went up, and everybody was running like, you know, the sky was falling down. You look back and you see ten years of nothing, and then we have two incidences, and now we're looking at spending a whole lot of money. And if it, if it works out to, to the betterment of town, and everybody's happy, and we can do something to make it safer, fine. But I caution that we don't overreact to every incident or everything that happens in town by throwing up our hands and running around like the sky's falling down. So, but I, I thank you folks for coming out, taking the time today, and it's, it's encouraging, it's encouraging. Thank you.
Okay, well, what we'll do is put the phone boards back up on the easels, you can go look at them, fill out your, fill out your comment sheets, you can leave them, or you can take them home and send them back later. If you feel more comfortable doing it on the internet, on the website, you can find the same survey at belfont.net. And, but we, we do prefer having written comments at all houses, it'll be much easier once the Streets Committee, at the end of this month, when the Streets Committee can actually see what you have in writing. We will have this... see what you have in writing. We will have this, this CNET taping and we're going to try to do something similar on Saturday, although CNET will not be here for that particular one. But we will try to capture what you've all said here this evening, but it also helps if you put it in writing. Yes, John?
The sketch is worth a thousand words. So if there is something that you would like to see, please make a diagram and send it to us. That's going to be a lot more productive than many paragraphs. So thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everybody.